Thank you for joining us this evening. Regular scheduled Park City City Council meeting on July 14th, 2020 at 7:00 PM. Marley, would you call the roll?
John Lynn here.
Here.
George Glover.
Here.
Ben Sausetta. Melvin Kerr. Tom Jones.
Here.
George Capps. Brandy Bailey.
Here.
Jim Schrader.
Here.
Mr. Mayor, you have a quorum.
Thank you. Tonight, George is going to lead in the invocation and Brandy's going to lead in the pledge of fair debate please stand.
All right, let's pray. Father God in heaven, we pray for wisdom, guidance, and discernment tonight for tonight's council meeting. We pray for protection for our citizens as well as our Park City employees.
... What you guys really want to look at is that third bowl of the section down, which is the unmodified opinion on the regulatory basis of accounting. Unmodified opinion is the highest level of opinion we can get. That's what you guys are looking for. I mean, there's no disclaimer, no qualifications, nothing like that. So, that's always good news. The last paragraph on that just talks about the other supplementary schedules in the back that we do give it in relation to opinion on those. And the last page there goes along with that, that we do also have 2018 comparative information on your schedules that you guys choose to do. Moving on to page four and five, that is your sole statement, is a summary statement. It shows all your funds. It shows the beginning unencumbered cash, your receipts, your dispersments, and then your ending cash, any accounts payable or encumbrances at year end, and then your actual cash in the bank. One thing I look on this schedule, easy thing to point out, is if there's any negative balance in the ending unencumbered cash or the ending cash balance, the city would have a cash, a potential cash violation. But all the amounts are positive, so no cash violation as far as what the city reports at year end. And on page five at the bottom, it does break down the composition of cash, where the money is held, checking accounts, cash on hand, and then you have some in the candidate municipal investment pool as well, which shows where it's at in basically the banking institutions. I'm going to jump around a little bit and hit just a few areas on the notes. Page 15 is your debt schedule. So, there's all your general obligation bonds, your temporary notes, and then the PBC revenue bond as well. You did issue two general obligation bonds during the year and one temporary note. Otherwise, you continue to make your scheduled payments on your debt. Page 16 is your future payments. Goes through 2039. If you don't issue any more bonds between now and then, you'll be done in 2039. So, I find that unlikely as you continue to grow and progress and have projects, but always like to point that out. Then I'm going to jump back to page 21. That is your summary of expenditures, actual budget. It is a comparison of your budgeted funds compared to your actual expenditures for just the funds that are budgeted. There's a lot more funds, but only the funds that are budgeted are listed on here. And one thing you look on this page is on the right-hand column. If anything was a positive balance, it means you would have spent more than what your budget authority allowed. Everything here is negative, which shows that you're underspent, you're within your budget authority on all the funds that you have budgeted. After that are all the individual fund pages, whether they have a budget or not, listed in greater detail, which totals then tie up to the summary page. I don't normally go through those unless there's specific questions or comments or concern. So, with that, there's your audit for 2019. Any questions?
Does anybody have any questions? No? Tom?
I have a motion to receive and file the audit.
John?
Second.
Okay. You got a motion and a second. Not saying any further discussion. All is in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? And that motion passes six zero. Thank you very much. We appreciate it.
Have a good night.
That brings us to item eight, which is receive the update on the 61st Street project. Jacob?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of the council. My name is Jake Porchers with WSP, and I will present a project update for the 61st Street improvement project in Park City. I hope you had just a handful of slides, but if there's any time to ask you. So, you can see here, some renderings of the project. So, just a quick history on the project. The project started in November 2018 under the city administration. The original scope of the project was to haze this current signal, near traffic signal to the first and Broadway, and build a three-lane section of curbing that are created to the west to bridge over the West Star Drive. Around August of 2019, we began a concept study to look at that intersection to determine if the signal concept is still the best alternative going forward. As part of that, we analyzed six concepts, and at the end of the day, we selected a roundabout with bypass lanes for the northbound, eastbound movement and westbound to northbound movement, and that was presented and adopted in February of this year. From then on, we've worked through the design of the project and recently conducted a project field check with city staff and staff from KDOT in May of 2020. One of the big things that came out of that field check meeting was an adjustment of the project limits. You can see on the top part of the screen there, there's initial project limits. You can see the intersection improvement and then the paving to the west. On the very east side of the page, the right side of the screen, you can see the current project, the 61st Street Bridge Replacement Project. That's currently under construction. It's almost complete. If we can go back one just for a moment. Thank you. You can see on that top slide with those initial project limits, we had a gap between the new 61st Street Bridge Project and the current project that would improve the intersection at Broadway. With discussions with city staff, we determined that it would be best to kind of fill in that gap to provide a continuous improvement along 61st Street. And as part of that, we shortened the project on the west end to around Prospect. So, that's where the current project stands today. So, next steps. We, last week, we submitted 90% design plans to the city. Utility relocations are currently ongoing. Utility companies are working on their redesign plans, starting to get moving on their relocations. That is anticipated to complete in January of 2020. Beginning the right-of-way acquisition process, we've identified 17 affected property owners. There's approximately 10 tracts of new right-of-way that we need and about 16 tracts of temporary construction easements that will be needed. Project is scheduled for a letting in February of 2021, anticipating construction to start in March and be complete by fall of 2021. So, project funding. So, the initial project funding is funded through WAMPO. In 2018, you can see there, we had a estimated construction cost of a little over $2.4 million. Back in November of 2019, we requested additional funding through WAMPO and were approved to increase that total project cost. You can see that anticipated construction cost went up to 2.9 with a total construction cost of 3.7. With the recent adjustments to the project, project scope, and the new roundabout, that new project estimate is up to $4.1 million. At this time, WAMPO does not have additional funding to be identified. So, city staff is currently working with KDOT to identify some potential grant money through the Economic Development Program. These last four slides are just some visualizations on what the roundabout will look like when it's complete. You can see here, this is the northeast corner looking at the roundabout. You can see the bypass lanes to allow the trucks to move freely for that right turn lane. You can see the trucks navigating through the roundabout. That was one of the, obviously, the driving design factor for the roundabout was to ensure that the trucks could make it through safely for all movements. So, that is the completion of my presentation. I will let these slides roll through, but I'll stand for any questions.
John, you want to touch base on the...
You betcha, sir. Ted, can you go back to the costs?
Thank you.
That's the long pole in the tent right there. And there's no other way to put it other than it's embarrassing to sit there and say, "We went to WAMPO and said, 'Hey, can we please?'" And WAMPO answered. Since that time period, other things have been changed and modified. There's no good reason or excuse for it. I know that in the original design contract, there were some things that were not included in that, some things that may, could have possibly been underestimated. At this point in time, it is what it is. If you go back and remember that what Jake had said is 17 affected properties. Back three or four years ago, when somebody would have been working on the 53rd Street Project and they wanted to go to their neighbor and said, "Hey, would you like to dedicate some of the land?", that was rather simple to do that. 2018, when all of a sudden it's requirement for any program that's going to use any portions of federal fund, you have to comply fully with the Uniform Act. That changes the game a little bit more. That means that you now have to do appraisals and you have to make certain that everyone is fairly and justly compensated. We all have to get tested on it to make certain that we don't mess anything up as we go through that process. The initial budget for right-of-way at the time was $100,000. And Ted, if you go forward two slides, I believe. One more slide. One of the properties that gives me the most amount of concern is the southwest corner. It's a little auto place right now. Just the sheer design with AutoZone, the Chisholm Bank, everything along that line, the roundabout has shifted somewhat to the west. So, that's going to be a rather large take on that particular property, such that there's a good opportunity that the remainder would be such that the state's going to say, "You need to take it all." So, in other words, we may need to buy that whole entire corner. Jake and I have gone back and forth. I beat him up tremendously, and he has done a very good job at sharpening the pencil when we went in May and did the field checks. We looked at every possible avenue to figure out the drainage on this, how that was going to be accommodated, is there anything that we could cut out of the budget? Originally, the original proposed design had a sidewalk on the south side of the road as well as the north side. The north side does have a 10-foot wide bike and hike trail, and you can see that from any one of the renderings that goes. It will now go from the bridge, continue on down to beyond AutoZone, cross over in front of Leakers, and then continue out to the west. That is ultimately going to be our connection to Valley Center and beyond, so we wanted to make certain that remained in there. But we didn't see utilization in putting a sidewalk, sister sidewalk on the south side of the road, so that was taken out. But again, my concern right now is that southwest corner. The right-of-way originally was budgeted $100,000, but now it's closer to $400,000 or $500,000. That's just some of the cost. As Jake had indicated there, we went and we had a great talk with Kristen in WAMPO a week or so ago and said, "Well, if you'd like reconsideration, then I'm certain we could look at you for the 2022 time period", basically saying, "We're done for right now if you want to remain on track." So, the option that she gave us was the city's portion becomes greater, which the slide showed. KDOT does have an Economic Development Program, and that's the program that we have also put in an application for improvements to 77th Street intersection. And if everything goes as planned, we're hoping that that would be an opportunity to sit there and say, "We're already working with WAMPO, working with this. Could you help with the shortfall?" No answer on that as of right now.
Tom, you got some comments?
Well, I would. You need to push the freight quarter thing too.
Yes, sir.
Because you're going to have potential from south of 77th Street going through the intersection. You're going to have the potential of west and growth over there in Air Capital and rest of those facilities over there.
In this particular case, proximity is our friend just because of the fact KDOT has already indicated, given no assurances, but they were the ones that kind of, after the cost share program announcement came out on July 9th, we were not selected for the 77th Street Project, which we had put in a joint application with City of Valley Center. But KDOT was the one who reached out to us and said, "Our particular project has merit when it comes to the Economic Development Program." And again, as I mentioned, I think we're going to benefit from proximity because 77th to what we were talking about is about the same distance as 61st to what we're talking about as well. So, I do believe that that's a good opportunity.
The state has funded freight.
Yes, sir.
And that's, there might be some money there available. I don't know how to go get it, but I can do some checking.
Yes, sir.
Tom, what's your overall? You're the WAMPO guy.
It's a moving target, so.
How do you feel about the changes and where we're at in the project and the increase?
If you talk to the county and some other cities, their budgets are, I made a comment about ours price increase, and they said, "Everybody in the county said, 'Well, ours is going down.'" But they put something out there, and when they're actually letting them, they're cheaper. They're saving money that way. But we grew this. So, we went the other direction. Instead of just putting something out there and bidding it and then letting the vendors bid it and have it come back, we've actually changed and grew this probably, what, 40%? Funding these days? I don't know where they're headed. I think the match is going to change one of these days. I don't think it'll be 80-20 anymore or 81 or 70, let's see, 21-79 is what it ends up being with the city's portion. But I think that they're looking more in the future 50-50, and that keeps getting spoken. And so, we need to take what we can get.
Okay. That's exactly why I wanted to ask you because...
If we delay this a couple of years, it may still be 80-20 or 80 or 21-79, or it could be 50-50. It depends on what the feds do. And at some point, I think that they're going to look for more buying in the future, the highway contracts.
Okay. Anybody else? Does anybody have any questions for Jacob since he's here this evening?
Looks good.
Yeah, your renderings are fantastic.
Thank you.
You guys did a very nice job on really the visualization of this. I mean, we talked about when we go to the public, I mean, these are going to be phenomenal pieces to go out and really show what we're looking at. John, kind of next steps for us on this?
The nerving part is the right-of-way. And like I said, the Uniform Act and its application towards this particular project, we have to start reaching out to each one of the property owners and indicate what their fair and just compensation would be for them and make certain that everybody is taken care of previously. That's going to take at least six months while we're in the process of doing the utility. February is still an extremely tight time period to be getting this out, just because, again, some things have changed when this was originally proposed as far as the process. So, it's going to be a tough six months to be working the right-of-way. And then, as we're doing that, the utility relocates. We're also taking into consideration the sewer line extension to make certain that we're not doing one thing that's going to turn right around and necessitate that we undo some work. So, there's going to be some of the stuff that, with the sewer line project, that will actually, I believe, help this a little bit.
Okay. Tom?
I would like to make a comment on numbers for the public and people in here that may not understand. Not everything in your project's covered. So, if you've got a $3 million project and part of it's right-of-way and force of the engineering and stuff like that, they won't reimburse you for that, so.
As far as the 80-20 split, that does not apply to preliminary design. So, all the work that's been done up to this has been on the city's dollar. Doesn't apply to right-of-way acquisition, doesn't apply to utility. It applies strictly to construction costs.
I wanted to clarify that because the dollars grow in the right, and people want to know why, and it's because, like you said, we may be paying a little bit more for right-of-way. And it's not covered.
Okay. Is there a recommendation from the council? Jim?
I recommend that we move and receive and file, I move that we receive and file the 61st Street project update.
Ben?
Second.
Okay. You got a motion and a second. Not seeing any further discussion. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? And that motion passes six zero. Thank you very much for coming this evening. That brings us to item nine, which is discuss and consider the WSP 61st Street Project Contract Amendment. Sean?
Yes, sir. That dovetails in nicely. Just a little bit of background, 2018 council approved the original design contract for the improvements to this. And then, last September, council approved the amendment, which included the intersection control evaluation. So, that was the six different concepts that they came up to determine the safe and most effective preferred intersection. Based on the results of that and the recent field checks, there have been, again, modifications to the original design as well as the project's limits have been made, necessitating an amendment to the contract that was not included in the original. The three major portions of it, and we've gone back and forth and debated and came up with what we feel is a fair scope and fair cost for this. First of all, is updating the intersection design to a single-lane roundabout with the bypass lane westbound to northbound and a bypass lane northbound to eastbound, and it's able to accommodate a WB67 truck as shown. It includes a pedestrian costing that is actually designed to accommodate all legs of the roundabout, even though we're only installing the bike lane portion on the north side. But if in the future we decide that we do need to put in a sidewalk, the design is already there to accommodate it. Again, we adjusted the project limits approximately 660 feet to Prospect Road on the west side and the west end, so that way it matches up with the bridge. It's important to note that the drainage improvements and the bike path do remain all the way to the Valley Center floodway bridge, so that way we have that in the future. And then, finally, the renderings that you saw, the developing of the 3D model to use to capture isometric and overhead renderings that we'll be able to use during public engagement time period. The contract amendment's just under $30,000 at $29,998.11. And previously, council had determined engineering fees would be paid out of MTBE until such time that its general obligation bonds are issued and then reimbursing MTBE funds.
And that's typical practice for us when we do these projects. We usually always pay that out of MTB fund, then we go for bonds, and then we pay ourselves back later. Does anybody have any questions for Sean? Their recommendation from the council? Brandy?
My question, we move to approve the WSP contract amendment for the design and engineering of the 61st and Broadway intersection in the amount of $29,998.11 to be paid out of the MTBE fund until general obligation bonds are issued.
And John?
Second.
Okay. You got a motion and a second. Not seeing any further discussion. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? And that motion passes six zero. Brings us to item 10, which is discuss the road assessment program and road repair replacement program. Zach?
Sir, before Zach gets into it, I would like to say each one of you have a packet at your desk. When he talks about the background and the history portion of it, we'll be looking at the PowerPoint presentation, which is on top. The second packet is the asphalt rating system, and the third packet is the cost of the asphalt rating system. He'll work his way through each one of those.
There we go.
In the original packet, the printout kind of went on to several because you're trying to capture a spreadsheet, so hopefully it's a little bit easier to follow.
Thank you.
All right. Yeah. Gabby?
Okay. All right. Good evening, Mayor and Council. Give you a little background here. Over the course of last year, staff has been working to develop a comprehensive road repair and replacement plan to address road network within the city. As there are approximately 48.6 miles of asphalt roads, it has been, it has been, or it has proven to be a much more involved process. The attached plan is based upon several assumptions that will be scrutinized and reevaluated on an annual and a biannual basis. Okay. So, the Asphalt Institute, it's a widely recognized and accepted, has a widely recognized and accepted pavement rating system. Well, this rating system, it is, it's based on low-volume asphalt roads, and low-volume asphalt road is any road with less than 1,000 cars, 50 trucks a day. It's intended for organizations having or not having specialized highway engineering and/or access to conventional testing facilities. As we go through this a little bit, you'll kind of see on the first page, we'll just kind of walk through. I'm not going to read it. You'll see on there basically what we did and how we did our testing. This is the grade sheet that we went through. I actually did it on electronic form, but I drove, myself and Alan drove our city streets, every one of our city streets, measured our city streets, and we graded them one by one for every one of these cracks. As we go through with this grading system, you'll see that you have a 0 to 10, or 0 to 5, depending on what type. If it's a, if it's a effect, like affecting performance per se, the top couple of layers, it's going to be a lesser rating. If it's strength, it's going to be a stronger rating, 0 to 10. You're going to add those up, and then you're going to subtract them from 100. That's going to give you your defect summary or your sum of distress, and then overall, it's going to give you your condition rating. Well, once you get your condition rating, which we see right up there, you're going to get a 0 through 100 score. You know, generally, a 30 through 80 are basically 30 through 80 is going to require like your over, you know, requires like an overlay, which is like, you know, that's going to be your average. I mean, that's going to be, that's probably 10, 10-year life of the road, okay? So, minimal, bare minimal is going to be your 0 to 0-30 year. That's like your, you know, 0-30, that's your one to five-year road. You're really not going to, or not, 0 to 30 is going to be your total reconstruction. That's a 20-year road. You know, 20-year road, the 80 to 100, I was going on the other end of the scale. This is a whole new scoring system that I had to learn. So, on your routine maintenance on the other end of the scale, those are typically going to be your, we will get into those. Once we go through there, we'll go to the next page. I mean, when we, I'll describe the cracks and everything as we go through, but you'll see how we got these ratings. I'll try to flow with this as much as we can. I'm not going to read every one of them, but you guys have got these. The transverse cracks, you can read them, a transverse crack. Transverse crack is going to be a deep-seated crack. That is going to be a strength-based crack. Your longitudinal crack, I mean, if you're not careful, you watch them, they can be confused as a surface crack, but I mean, that's why you get out and measure. Longitudinal, that is definitely going to be a strength crack also. Then you get your lesser ratings, it's going to be our block and your multiple cracking, you know, alligator. These are all, like I said, these all are what we use to rate, you know, get your overall rating of your roads. So, I mean, you can see every single one of these as we go through here. You're shrinking, you're rutting, which we've got on every single one of our roads. And the hardest part about doing this test is that every single one of our roads is different, especially different here. And we'll get into that in this next section as we're going through. Corrogation, that's going to be a surface. So, I mean, I think, I think, you know, as we go through, we've pretty much seen about enough of these slides as we're coming through. So, if you guys kind of get the gist of this, we'll move on into what we ended up with after we did our scoring, and that's going to be what we ended up with, our inventory sheets. And if you've got those in front of you, I don't know if Ted's got those on the slide, but does he? Okay.
Ted, next slide, please.
That'll be a whole lot easier. I mean, you guys, as far as the slide, this is really the meat and potatoes of the whole report anyway. You guys have got an... So you guys have got an idea of what we went through, what we did as far as our ratings, how we got our ratings. We went out, we scored them, get our zero to 10, we put them on, in our sheets, we come through. And so, once we got that, staff completed the inventory utilizing the rating system. And like I said, you had to understand, our roads are not the standard system, they're not the standard thickness, nor do, you know, a lot of our roads have the routine maintenance done on them. So this here, what we did, after scoring this, we've got our spreadsheet, it was put into it, you'll see it scored. We've gone on this spreadsheet, scored, they're going to be broke down, the top three layers, you'll see the top has got a red line and a yellow scored, these are going to be anything, we got anything scored above an 80.
No.
Huh?
This is, this is, as far as the sum of defects, this is the zero to 30.
Other end, once again, other end of the scale, anything at 30. And so, these here are the ones that are going to require your total overlays. And these are the red line, so the red line signifies, you know, immediate, this is immediate overlay, this is big money cost. This would be the ultimate, this is what we would put, you know, you're talking, you know, complete rebuild, your 10-inch bays, you're complete over, you know. So with this spreadsheet, you've got it put in here. Road inventory, you've got your, you've got every city, every city road put on here, every, you know, all 48 miles length, width. Go in here, you put the next logical plan, come up with it, come up with a price, boom. Then you go your middle of the road, your middle of the road ratings, the same thing, you know, you can see anything, you know, lesser, and those are more going to be your, you know, more your Nova chips, your chip seals, you know, maybe heavier, heavier scrub seal type, two-inch overlays. And then, and then you'll come to the bottom one, and that's just your standard, you know, brand-new roads. The brand-new roads, you're going to have the slurry seals to no treatments, okay? This, okay, I'll let you.
I was going to say, if you wanted to highlight the actual inventory, the reason why Zach went ahead and color-coded these, this basically gives you your prioritization of which is the worst road and which is the best road in the city. All those in yellow received a score of 30 or less, so if you go back to the previous presentation, that's going to need complete reconstruction, if we wanted to get it to that point. So this was saying, our worst road in the community is Old Lawrence, I think most people would agree with that. Anything that's that peach color in the middle, this is where you're between a score of 30 and 80, it's going to require some kind of overlay. And then anything that's in green, which is starting on the second page and going on to the third page of your newer roads, that's just regular routine maintenance to keep them up, cracked ceiling going on. The goal of the overall program is to do the next logical step in each road's lifestyle, cycle, because each road's a little bit different. So, once you were able to complete the inventory, then you went on to the next one, which is the actual cost of it, to sit there and figure out what each road would. The help that we need from council is to sit there and look at this list and say, you either agree or disagree. And then this kind of sets your pecking order as to which roads you want them to concentrate on. If Old Lawrence Road is the worst road in the community, that may be true, probably is true. But how much people actually travel on that other than trucks? Do we want to spend the time, money, and resources to work on that? Or would it be taking into consideration location and travel and duration and cars, traffic counts and everything, that we would want to maybe go to the next road and put more our efforts on that, so? If you want to cover the cost of it, and how we came up with the cost.
Yeah, the, our sheet's right here. Yeah, and right here, we, on our analysis sheet, what we did here, for the spreadsheet we've got here, with the analysis, what I did is we went through and we contacted local contractors along with, you know, along with the going county bids, or, you know, going rate on the county bids, and we took the top, you know, the top, what do we have, seven, six, seven road reconstruction projects or next step of the process, and we put them down in there. So, you know, like we've got on your paper here, we broke it all down into square yards. So, I mean, like Sean said, we've got the possibility on this spreadsheet to say, if we wanted to do everything possible, we could do every single step possible, but logically, that's not what we need to do. Like you said, in the yellow, we come down here and say, like you said, for fact, in Old Lawrence Road, you go in there, a 10-inch cement slurry base is 850 a square yard, and your, 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 which, your new road construction, which is going to be your BM1 mix, it's an asphalt mix, and it's a four-inch asphalt lift, their going price is $75 a yard. So you're looking at, you know, what is it, .21 tons, you know, equals your square yard. And figured for the total, for total asphalt, 66,918. For your cement slurries, 36,125, combined total of 103,000. $63 right there is going to give you a pretty, pretty stinking close number for this year if we had to say, hey, we want to go in there with, you know, with that cost, with your, you know, say we had your $1,200, if we had your, if we had a cost of, if you had a cost of traffic control. Traffic control, it's commercial, we've got a commercial price of $1,200. Add your $1,200 on top of that, well, say you needed a milling overlay with that project, you could add that $16 per square yard. You can add to or take away whatever process you need to in each one of these processes. That's what makes this plan really amazing, is that it's so fluid. And that's where we're getting the cost as we go through. The good thing about this is, as we're going through here, to bring us to the next logical step for each one of our roads, we're looking at, you know, a little over $6.5 million. Like I says, you know, that's pretty optimistic. 2021, we've got roughly $200,000 budgeted. You know, and that's in that capital improvements, $5,000 or greater, approximately $50,000 for routine maintenance. That leaves us right around $150,000. As Sean was saying, it's going to take roughly about 44 years to fully accomplish a plan if we were to do it next logical step, you know, just like this, the way we did it, $150,000. So being mindful that, and with limited resources, you know, staff's recommended and council, you know, consider incrementally increasing the annual amount of budgeted in the future to reduce the overall, you know, overall cost, duration of the plan, you know, through the duration of the plan, so. You know, basically what we're saying, you know, we're super excited about this plan, you know, something that we haven't had in the future, haven't had in the past, and something that's going to, it's really going to help us in the future. I mean, as far as when we do come for our budgets. This is something that, when I signed on, you know, and Sean presented to me, I'm like, you know, this is something I can buy into. I'm not putting it quite as eloquent as Sean had put it, but I'm telling you, I'm passionate about this. This is something that we can knock out, this is something I can believe in, this is something I think the city could buy into. It's definitely the future, so.
Zach, I got a couple of questions for you.
Hey, I'll answer them.
So, one, I just appreciate all the hard work and effort that went into this, because I know the time-consuming, backbreaking work that it was to get the detail that you needed to put into your spreadsheet. But in the future, and I know we just talked about Old Lawrence Road, and it may be on the top of the list, but is there a bisbang for our buck? How do you, let's say we got 250,000 that we're going to spend towards roads, and we pick two projects up top, and it leaves us with 15,000 remaining, does it make sense, or how do you also use data to support, if you come back to like Meadow Hill Road, where it's got $780 in repairs that it needs, that you come back and do you tackle some of those things that are lower down on the list?
Yeah, without a doubt, I mean, I mean, that's the good thing about this, I mean, this is great, great to help us tackle this. I mean, it gets us out about, with this, and with the knowledge that we've got, and being out there, I mean, it's just, I mean, it's just that tool that lets us be, you know, be out there, be out there to be able to do that type of thing. So of course, we'll take every bit of those funds and utilize those in whatever way we can, so.
And when we go in there and maybe we pick off some low-hanging fruit, what kind of extension will we see in the life with the proposed repairs? And then we make those, or, I mean, what are we looking for on a, you know, you go back and you do a $10,000 improvements? Like, what kind of timeframe do you think we see? Obviously, each thing's a little bit different.
Yeah, yeah, exactly, I'm talking, as far as say, say if we did something as simple as, something as simple as a slurry seal, which is just your oil with maybe just a little bit of, a little bit of like silica sand or fine sand, you're looking three to five, three to five years, you know, added to the life of your road, just because you're sealing, sealing that road off. Then if you do what they consider a chip seal, which is like an emulsified oil with your rock, just hardened rock that seals it off, you're adding seven to, I mean, just depends on what the oil you use, seven to 10 years' life. So each one of these will extend the life anywhere from, say, three to 10, depending on, you know, the more extensive, the, you know, the, man, actually, you know, honestly, the more expensive and extensive, the longer the life of the road. So yeah, the longer the extended life of the roads.
I really appreciate all the hard work here. Brandy?
What's the average life of a road?
You know, really, since we have low-volume roads, I mean, a little more advantage, if they're done right. Honestly, if they're done right, you could get one of our roads, I would say, I'd say you could probably get our road to last just about 18 years.
So that's if it's done right, so some of these roads might not have been done right, so what would you say, maybe the average life of some of these?
Like our roads?
Yes.
Like eight years?
So when we, if we?
Not now, currently, now, to the standards we do today, 18, 15, 18 years, because they're done to, you know, proper standards now. But the ones in the past, you know, I mean, we're seeing the results of them now, so.
So then my other question was, the one the mayor just asked, was how, if we do this, how long does it extend it? So if you're saying if we did a chip seal, that will extend it seven to eight years, so does that extend it seven to eight years, and then it maybe, then it moves to the next, so say it's in this category, does it then move it to the yellow category?
Yeah.
I mean, or do you then look at it and do then a chip seal again?
You more than likely would put it up to, ultimately, you're just buying time.
So I guess the true question would be, is after you complete a repair, will you then go back and re-rate it after the work's done?
Yeah, you definitely re-rate it, and then honestly, with the condition of our roads, our older roads, you're just, we're really kind of sitting there, and you're just buying, you're extending the life until we have to go back to where we're ultimately doing a reconstruction. On our older roads, our newer roads, we can get away with, with the newer technology, we can get away with doing like, say, what they call, like a milling, or like a milling overlay, you can do a six, a four, like a four-inch milling overlay, they mill down four inches and then re, you know, repay four inches. So you wouldn't have to do a total reconstruction, but you could go down, take out the bad four inches, redo. So we've got a lot of really decent roads, and then we've got a lot of real bads. So a lot of them, we're just buying time, but a lot of, you know, doing some really good stuff.
When we complete a repair, how long should you wait before you go back and re-rate it? Obviously, you probably don't want to.
Oh, I mean, immediately, we could plug it right in, and that's the good thing about this system. You complete a repair, we do one of these, you could plug it right in, and immediately, I mean, that repair immediately extends the life from that point on, so.
I just didn't know that maybe after a repair, you wait six months or something, then you're back and re-rate it.
Immediately from the time of repairs, what they, you know, what they give us, so.
Brandy, did you have anything else?
Yeah, I still have one question. So with road maintenance, how long should we expect that, until we have to do? So if you have one of these brand-new roads, and we keep up with the maintenance with it, it's one of the low-hanging fruits, so each year we have enough extra that, okay, we're going to just, you know, keep, then would it, let's say right now, you say it's at maybe an eight-year life, so within that, if we keep doing those maintenances, could it then make it where the average life goes to that 18 years?
Oh, yeah.
Before we look to have to replace it completely again?
You know, honestly, what we're looking at then is, with some other things that we've got in play, then we can most definitely take that road there and possibly, you know, prevent that road from having to, you know, possibly not have a total reconstruction for, you know, you say that road has got a life right now of like 15 to 18 years, but if we're doing the, you know, the little things, the preventative maintenance is the, you know, you know, and your routine maintenance is then the in-between, as you go on, then the smaller repairs as you go up, and that road itself could last you maybe, you know, 30, 40, you know. You doubled life of the road doing things like these, so you're really good.
Because I don't know, because I don't know roads. When you do these repairs, can you do those repairs, can you do those multiple times? Can you do it over and over and over before you have to go to the next, to the next level?
Yeah, you really can, you really can.
So it could potentially stay in a green section or a brown section for many years?
Yeah, so basically, say we did, we chose to do a chip seal on a road, and then, you know, ultimately, we said, you know, we really can't afford, or it's going to be maybe two, three years down the road. Well, we choose to chip seal that road again, it's going to be perfectly fine to do another chip seal on that road.
And I have one more. So the mayor asked, you know, how often, or when do we review it again after we fix it? Well, some of this stuff, we're not maybe going to be able to fix for still several years, so how often do we plan to review the entire list?
You know, that's, I'm out there all the time, so we've got this, we've got some other software. So every time we, every time we do a repair, you know, that's just my plan, that's just how it works. I'm constantly, I'm constantly adding to my database, so pretty much anytime we do a repair, it gets added to it, so.
Okay, Tom?
I was going to say that I know Wichita's adopted a new system, and there's, I think the county's looking at it too, where they're looking at on new roads coming back in and sealing like three to five years after it's built. And it's adding a significant amount of length.
Really does.
Instead of waiting 10 years to do it, so that's something we need to look at down the road.
No, that really. And that's exactly, that's exactly, if you look at what we've got here, that's the idea behind a lot of this. I mean, had we had newer roads, I mean, that's why some of our newer roads you see, let's see, some of our bottom road, that's why the next step on the lowest-scoring roads, I've got put down as a slurry seal. That's the next, you know, because you are, that's the next possible step. The same exact type of, you know, type of thing that the city's doing, the county's doing, that's on a new road, that's the same mentality I've got, okay, boom, because that's exactly what's working, that's what you do.
I also made one other comment, you've done a good job here, but I don't want the council to get a false feeling, because the ones that are in the green have all these cracks and things, they have roads that don't have curb, where you get squished and pushed off to the side, and so we've got some issues with the green too.
See, and that's the one thing, okay, I'm a lot better answering questions than I am presenting. So that's why, when it does say this, that's why I want to stress that these aren't routine, you know, because this, it's really hard. Sean and I know, we've worked, we worked really hard to put this. you know, because this, it's really hard, Sean and I know, we've worked, we worked really hard to put this together. You know, and our minds worked really hard to present this and put it together to present a model, something that we could work with, knowing the fact that Park City doesn't have, I mean, we just don't have routine roads. We've got roads in some places that, that have got it, you know, you know, there like this and you've got the trash truck, so yeah. And, and what may rate this, you know, here, so yeah, it's something definitely, it may rate up here, but it, it's something, it gives, this gives us the best, absolute best working model that we could have for Park City right now though. I, I could guarantee that.
But I want to let council know that just because stuff's in the brown and it's in the green, doesn't mean it's A-OK. It's got issues that we need to address in the future.
Honestly, that's, that's true.
If I can, sir, that's, that's a great point. It's, it's pointing the, the street fixing machine in the right direction.
Exactly correct.
Several assumptions. When you lay that brand new asphalt road, was it laid properly? Was it to correct thickness? Was the base done correctly? Uh, Eric will put in a new water pipe and two years from now it could be cracking. But then right next door is another water pipe that was put in 40 years ago and we have had no problems with it. So that's the various different soils around here. Um, that's why it needs to be scrutinized and revisited at least on an every annual, if not bi-annual period. Because also at the same time, our priorities are going to shift. One of the roads that is green, guess what, it turned, you know, to the, the peach color because of something. One of the things that Zach outlined is straight from the get-go, if you look at the $200,000 schedule for next year's budget, $50,000 of it is going to be what he's talking to you about next. The regular routine maintenance, if you put in a brand new road, you're going to be three months, six months from now trying to go out and crack seal it to make certain that it doesn't, that it always remains in that green status. So each year, we're going to have to come back and take a look at it. Each year, council may have a little bit different priority. Uh, each year, if we only have 200,000 and we got 15,000 looked over, we're going to take a look and say, well, we can do items one, two, and three, and let's jump down to 28 because it fits the budget. So it's, it's just something that gets us going. When somebody says, well, why did you fix that road versus this one? We can hold it up and say, well, based on this particular date, here was the score, here was this, and that's, it just gives us something to plan to.
I was just trying to make a point with council that.
Very good point.
Everything's not well.
Right.
Just, this is a nice grading system.
Thank you.
Yeah. It's always good to have good data when we look at that. John?
Uh, just one thing, I guess I want to kind of take a flashback and remember like, think of this, these life expectancy is when we do specials. Cause as many developers trying to get 20 and 25 year and they're coming with 30. Roads don't last that long, so we're going to end up fixing those on our dime instead of the developer's.
Brandy?
It's good, I like the, it's good information. But the thing I didn't notice on here is like maybe when the year, the, when the year, the year the road was originally put in. So do we, do we know that? Do we have records that go back that know how old, how, how old truly a road is right now?
No, but it can definitely be a field that's added as we move forward.
Yeah, yeah, and that's, I mean, that's something we can definitely add in, you know.
Cause we have a couple on here that are at 100%, so that's meaning they were just done this year?
Yeah, yeah, this year or, you know, the most recent roads, yeah.
100% on the score?
They're at 100 on the score.
It just means rating.
Oh, the very last ones?
Yeah.
No, actually, those are dirt roads. Those, those are not our roads. I mean, it, they are our roads, but they're not asphalt. We just needed to have some place of indicating. So the gray color ones that say it's 100%, it's because there was actually not graded because there were dirt roads.
Well, there's two in the green.
Uh, two in the green.
So those were done this year?
Reece Street was, I'm not certain about McKenna, and it may be the fact that, or you could have a road that's 10 years old that's still way up there just because it's performing well. You could have a road that's five years old that's already in the yellow or the peach color. It's, it's again, it's pointing us in the right direction, predicated on location, soil types, how the base was, how it was originally installed, what's the traffic.
And that's kind of where I'm getting at is, you know, how long ago did we put the road in? And how many times, how often are we repairing that particular road? Or how often is that road needing, needing to be fixed? So that way we know, is, is there truly something wrong with that, that?
Right, right.
That process as well. Over the years, the technology will get better and we will learn that instead of using a 10 inch cement slurry mix, that we're going to use something along the lines of P2 emulsions, which give, we're learning every day. And it's just that based on the data that we have right now, this is the, the best.
Yeah, and this, this is good data. I'm just, I was just thinking, you know, going, going forward, how do, how do we improve this?
All right, Jim?
Uh, this is great information. I was reading along with you and in your few minutes of explaining it. I loved it. This quantifies it. It's great information. I don't have any questions that haven't already been asked. I'd go ahead and move that we approve the adoption of the road repair and replacement plan.
Ben?
Second.
You got a motion in the second, not seeing any further discussion. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Close. And passes 6-0. Zach, you're up again with item 11, discuss and consider approving the purchase of a crack sealing machine.
Um, visuals. Sean's going to pass around a couple visuals because they didn't, they didn't get sent. I lost a thumb drive for, for this information. This is going to be a lot shorter and sweeter.
I went online. I went online and looked.
Right, yeah, we'll, we'll get this knocked out. So while, while he's doing this, I'm, I'm just here to, to, like, like mayor said, to discuss and consider approving the purchase of the crack sealing machine. Um, during the past, past year, public works completing an assessment of departmental equipment requiring replacement or removal. As a result, Streets Department determined their SIM line crack sealing machine was in poor shape. Therefore, it was removed from the equipment inventory. Since then, staff has determined the necessity of a crack sealer in its street inventory. The implement, implementation of the crack sealing program will be vital to the road replacement plan that we, that we were just putting in place for future improvements of city roads. Staff sent requests for proposals to several area vendors for diesel powered melter with a minimum of 120 gallon mixer tank, safety lights, heated hose, electric wand, and we received proposals back from three different vendors. Of those, I've got three of the bids, all three of the bids included. Two of them included their description in their bids. So I don't know if you guys have got the copies of those with you. But I, I printed off the picture of the two that included their description. I did not waste the time because the third one didn't include anything. So I didn't even print off a picture of the third, if that's, if that's okay with you. Um, of the three companies, we got a quote from Craftco for an SS 125 diesel melter. It's a 125 gallon diesel melter. You know, these are all, every one of these machines are all pretty much equal. I mean, when it comes down to it, nuts and bolts, these machines are not a whole lot different. So really, you know, you've got the one from Craftco, you've got the SIM line from McConnell, which is the M1 mil, or M1 melter. That there is a 150 gallon melter. And the Seal Master, they're the ones that didn't include their description. The one from Craft, or Craftco, that came in at 57,117.90. McConnell coming at 46,987. And Seal Master was 48,875. Like I said, out of, out of the machines, I'm pretty much identical. To a point, they do the same thing. The technology on the machines are just, I mean, one of the main reasons we're, you know, we're, we're choosing to recommend the SIM line is because for one, you get an extra 50 gallons and for two, they do have an external pump on their mixer, which, yeah, I mean, learning from experience with the Craftco, when I was at the county, we had a Craftco machine. Operators neglected, you know, it happens all the time. One of our operators, several operators neglected it. You heat up oil, any kind of, any kind of petroleum oil, it, it has the capability of coke. And cokes up, messes up that machine, they have to go in there and they have to clean it out totally. Well, they had to replace the, you know, had to replace the pump that it, go in there, completely clean it out, you know, drain it all out, $3,000 later because it wasn't covered under warranty because of the operator error. You know, this is an external pump. If that ever happened with us, even, even if it was under warranty, we'd still have to pay, but it's an external pump. But that was one reason. But you guys may ask, why do we need a crack sealer? Crack sealer, you know, step one. Crack sealer is one of the first lines of defense in your, your, uh, street maintenance program. That's like Brandy asked, you know, get a brand new road. First thing, one of the first things you're going to do to a road is crack seal. If you're going to, if you're going to chip seal, first process, crack seal. Every single road, concrete, asphalt, you get cracks. You get cracks, you get moisture, you get moisture, it destroys a base. Get it, you know, get moisture, you get destroyed base, destroy a road. You want to seal it off. Is it cost effective? We could get, uh, we could get a contractor out here, you know, roughly for just slightly more than we could get our guys to do it. You know, so it, it's roughly about equal, but the convenience of us having a machine out here and having it to where we could send our guys about any time, you know, dispatch them here, say, I want them, you know, I want them this area, I want them in this ward this day, and I want them in this ward this, it's just, for us to have the convenience of having a machine and year around. We've got so many areas, so many areas that we can jump ahead and get these done before. It's just, it's vital. If there's one, one piece of street machine that every public works department should have, it's their own crack seal machine. If they can't, then they should have a good crack sealing program.
Zach, I think you said it perfectly right there. Um, if council remembers, um, several years ago, we hired, um, people over the temp help over the summer and we spent a couple of summers of that, um, making some forward progress on several of our roads that obviously probably increased the lifespan of some of those. And that has been a wish of the council since then. But that's been a, a difficult task to try to find qualified, qualified people that can temporarily run that. So I think adding us to our assets, where we can protect our assets is an excellent idea.
I really do too.
Jim?
I just had one question. Yeah, I, I know what you're saying, even the street I walk on is, was crack sealed in that last go around. It's already recraft in that amount of time. Just out of curiosity, how many, how many years did we get out of the, the old one, used to, retired?
You know, I, it was gone before I got here and, yeah.
Strikes me these last a pretty long time.
Yeah, they, they.
It's a pretty low investment.
Eric seems to think it was about 10 years old.
Okay.
Yeah.
And, and from what I understand, that thing was, was completely wore out, just. I, I talked to Nick today and he said it was on its last leg.
So that's 4,600, that's 46,000, $4,600 a year. So it seems like a pretty.
And it really, and it really is a good investment.
Smart investment.
And, you know, like I said, staff recommends we buy the SIM line. I talked to, I talked to Dale Roberson, who is our vendor. He said if, you know, if we were to purchase it, he said, you know, from a phone call, say tomorrow, he'd have one at our door in 30, less than 30 days, so.
Okay, I got George, Tom, and then John. George?
Yeah, Zach, got a question for you. As far as your guys knowing how to lay this out, do they need any training in, in order to do this?
Honestly, honestly, everybody training, um, you know, something I could provide. Alan's done it for a lot of years. In fact, from our old machine to the new machine that we'd get, regardless of what machine we buy, the, the manpower and the training, I mean, it's, it's just, it's not, it, it's just so much easier now. And, uh, the only, the only thing that we will have to ask is because, because we are limited. It's, it's a, it's a slow process, but with us owning a machine, we can still get it done because we'll be doing it right. You know, whereas before, we were hitting every single thing and they felt like they had to seal the entire stinking road. We will hit the cracks. So I told them we could get the same amount done, or we could get more done with less people, so. I mean, it'll be managed pretty good, so.
That all you had, George?
Yeah.
Tom?
I was just going to ask about maintenance. I don't know if you use the day, you just take it back to the yard and cook, eat it up again. Is there a lot of maintenance cleaning or?
There, uh, as far as, as far as cleaning it, there's, there's, we would use up the oil enough time. We would use up the oil more time, you know, faster than, than we would have to worry about it coking up. But yeah, there's a, there's certain, certain, uh, that's the only education really, that the most important education is the startup and, and the shutdown. That's the biggest education is, is them knowing how to, you know, shut it down. Because, I mean, there is a certain, certain method to do that, to, to extend the life of the machine, so.
I just didn't know about hoses blowing them out, stuff like that.
Yeah, and the good thing about it is like this machine and every other machine, they've got, uh, they've got automatic, uh, you know, suckback and so.
Okay, John?
Did we have a motion already?
No.
Okay. So, uh, will this be stored like in the, under, under the, you know, it's coming there? And then, uh, next question would be, will this go, now that we know 10 years, will this go on the replacement plan?
Hasn't as of yet. But so far, the one thing that we proposed and adopted was a vehicle replacement plan. The next thing that we're working on is an equipment replacement plan, so.
I knew that was coming.
Okay, so, uh, I would make a motion to approve the quote from Mac McConnell and Associates for SIM line M1 melter in the amount of $46,987 to be paid out of the special streets and highway capital outlet machinery and equipment line.
George?
I'll second the motion.
Okay, we got a motion in the second. Not seeing any discussion.
I just have a question for Zach since he came from the county. We're going to beat him up now.
All right.
So hydraulic?
Yes.
It was done by the county.
Uh huh, which part?
From city limits up to 85th Street is just, I mean, it seems like it's exactly like it was prior to them paving it forth. What, is that something with a base or is that something that this will?
Um, you mean now or before?
Cracks in it?
Yeah, they, uh, yeah, it just, it just depends. Sometimes it's a contractor they got. And it's, it really depends on who they let it out to. And in that particular year that they did that hydraulic, they, uh, I just have to say that the contractor and, and their choice of contractor, who chose the contractor, just, the contractor choice wasn't, wasn't the best, so.
I just, I.
It just wasn't the greatest work and, and it, let's just say the inspection wasn't the greatest either, so.
There was a, there were some annexation issues with that where we took the road so that the county wouldn't have to maintain it, but they agreed to take, to resurface it before they did and it was like, man, that was pretty, you know.
Yeah, yeah, we'll just say that that part, there was, there was a lot of.
We might want to be careful on what we're saying here.
Yeah, yeah, so we're good there.
Thank you.
We got a motion and a second, not seeing any further discussion. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Close. And that motion passes 5-0. That brings us to item 12, which is discuss and consider an ordinance amending sections 10-302 of the municipal code relating to the manner in which property police custody can be disposed of. Doug?
Mayor and council, this is a, an ordinance amendment that's been done at the request of the police department to help them, um, facilitate the cleaning up and the management of their property, uh, section. At present, section 10-302 requires that the police department hold a public auction in order to dispose of property that it has that's unclaimed or for which it can't find the owner. Much of the property they have is really of very little value, um, and so a public auction really doesn't make any sense. There's no, there's no state requirement of a public auction for that kind of property. And so this ordinance would delete that requirement and then allow the police department kind of at their discretion to either dispose of the property, junk it, put it to some use if that was possible, or to dispose of it some other way, but not, not have the requirement of doing it by public auction. And under fiscal impact, the, the indication is that this would eliminate, would allow the police department to rather quickly eliminate much of the property that right now is kind of clogging up their property section. Free up space and allow a little more efficiency in the management of that department. So staff would recommend that council adopt the ordinance amendment.
Does anyone have any questions for Doug? John?
I'd make a motion to approve ordinance 11, excuse me, start over, 1102-2020. two dash twenty twenty, an ordinance amending section ten dash three zero two of the municipal code of the city of Park City, Kansas, pertaining to the disposition of property in police custody and repealing the original of said section ten dash three zero two. George?
I have a second motion.
Okay. We have a motion and a second. Not seeing any further discussion. Marlo, would you call the roll?
John Lanier?
Aye.
George Glover?
Aye.
Ben Saucetta?
Melvin Kerr?
Tom Jones?
Aye.
George Capps?
Brandy Bailey?
Aye.
Jim Schrader?
Aye.
And that passes five zero. That brings us to item thirteen, which is discuss and consider an ordinance amending sections nine dash one one four of the municipal code relating to court costs and fees. Doug?
Mayor and council, this ordinance amendment is to section nine dash one one four of the municipal code that relates to costs and fees in the municipal court. There are two kind of minor changes here. The first one is at the request of D. In subsection A, where you see the change has been made, there is a technology fee of twelve dollars that every person, unless they're found not guilty, who appears in municipal court pays as part of their costs and fees. And that technology fee was originally put in there, I think when the police department knew that it was going to digit it and had to really increase its technological functioning in issuing tickets and, and processing matters through the municipal court. But when we did that, we allowed that to be paid into the general fund. D would prefer that that be paid specifically to a public safety and court technology fund, so that the monies are earmarked and can be used for all matters of police technology and their enforcement of our municipal code ordinances, and also for court and their operations as far as enhanced technology, which seems to be something that's coming faster and faster. The second-
If I could just clarify that a little bit. Those funds began being collected in two thousand sixteen, which was before my time here. For whatever reason, they have from day one been deposited to a separate fund. So this isn't changing, this isn't taking anything away from the general fund, it's just putting in print more of what's happening and allowing it to be used also for court enforcement.
So if everybody remembers, we had a pretty lengthy conversation around this, and D came and asked me about that. And, you know, kind of my intent at that time was want to make sure that we got the police department on, on digit ticket, but then also the court needed some technology upgrades. So my concept behind that was that those fees would be able to use in all areas that funnel into the court, so the court can make sure they're staying on top of their technology. Doug, did you have anything to finish on that?
Not on that. I, I do have the second change, which is in subsection D, and it's just the addition of some language. And this, this relates to a, a fee that, that, that the, the court, the municipal court judge and the court imposes for drug screening. And the court usually uses that, say, in just two general areas. First of all, in determining appropriate sentencing, which is already covered in subsection D, but more importantly, it's probably used more by the court in connection with determining whether defendants are staying on their, complying with their probation requirements, which generally, no alcohol, no drugs. We have some contractor who does that for us. The amount of that can be set by the court, doesn't require action by the governing body. But I did add that additional language reads, or in determining whether the defendant is complying with the court's conditions of probation, just to make sure that the court has the authority to, to, to charge those fees when it, when it does drug testing for those reasons. So I, I would suggest that the, and staff would recommend that council adopt the ordinance amending section nine one one four as described.
Okay. Brandy?
So just to clarify, this isn't creating a whole new fund that needs to be budgeted for, it's staying within the general fund and just making its own, own extra line item so we know where to put the revenue?
You have seen it in the budget documents as the police technology fund in the past, so it's already been there. All this is doing is getting the paperwork to say what we've been doing and to adjust that name a little bit to allow court and code enforcement instead of just police.
Okay, okay.
Jen?
I don't have any questions. So I would move to approve ordinance number eleven oh three dash twenty twenty, an ordinance amending section nine dash one fourteen of the municipal code of the city of Park City, Kansas, pertaining to court costs and fees to be assessed in the municipal court of the city of Park City, Kansas, and repealing the original said sections nine dash one fourteen.
And John?
Second.
Got a motion and a second? George, did you have anything, or are you just starting second? Okay. Not seeing any further discussion. Marlo, would you call the roll?
John Lanier?
Aye.
George Glover?
Aye.
Ben Saucetta?
Melvin Kerr?
Tom Jones?
Aye.
George Capps?
Brandy Bailey?
Aye.
Jim Schrader?
Aye.
And that motion passes five zero. That brings us to item fourteen, which is discuss and consider the purchase of a smoke detectors and heat sensors for the city administration center. Sean?
Yes, sir. This was brought to my attention a couple months ago. Council approved, uh, construction of four storage bay units downstairs, and we went ahead and worked with Sedgwick County Fire Department to get approval of that, to make certain that it was done correctly. One of the concerns that came up is the fact that this building currently does not have smoke detector or heat detectors. So we went ahead and, when we found that out, went out for bids. So we got three different bids from Sandifer, Pinnacle Fire and Automation and ADT. There's a substantially difference in costs. They range anywhere from just around eighteen thousand dollars to install that, to, down to ADT, which is ninety-eight sixty point three one. The difference between the three of them also is the monitoring fee on a monthly basis. The ADT contract, which is the lowest cost vendor, has a requirement for a five-year contract. So we looked at it as far as the return on investment, and after five years, the system, we would be able to move it to a different monitoring system, so we could do that as well. At that point in time period, go with a lesser expensive monitoring system. Each option also requires installation of a separate, separate or dedicated electrical circuit, so that's approximately six hundred dollars. It is unbudgeted, but staff is recommending that we split the cost between the police department and the general fund, administration department contingency fund for the twenty twenty budget. And we recommend going with ADT. That'll provide us heat sensors downstairs in the basement, which should make certain every, as well as alarms, smoke detectors up here, so that way employees know if there's a particular problem downstairs or upstairs.
Does anybody have any questions?
I guess I'm just dumbfounded that we did not have any decent people. So I would make a motion to approve the extension ADT, for smoke detection and heat sensor, associated with lack of work and not, not with C nine five, big, big, big emergency.
Got a motion and a second. Not seeing any further discussion. All those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? And that motion passes six zero. That brings us to item fifteen, which is discuss and consider approving the exterior paint program. Sean?
Yes, sir. So far, we've had success under the new home buyers program, as well as the recently adopted exterior grant program. But a council member requested staff create an exterior paint program to help residents make exterior improvements to their properties that may have fallen short as far as qualifying for the exterior grant program. So we looked around, researched several examples from other cities, and found out there is actually a fair number of programs, each one of them having different variables, such as whether property ownership or tenants allowed, income levels, allowable expenditures, and the amount that they would reimburse. The model that I felt would be closest to Park City in order to recommend is a program where as the city could provide up to two hundred and fifty dollars for paint supplies for qualifying homeowners. Single-family homes, not mobile homes or rental properties, duplexes or multifamily. Applicants must own and reside in the property being painted, and only one property per owner. All labor must be accomplished or provided by the homeowner, so that doesn't mean that they can't contract with it. It's just, they would be the ones responsible for that. So the city would be paying for the paint and supplies. The house must be prepared for painting before a voucher could be issued, which means scraping loose paint, power washing the dirt off of it, grease and grime, and repairing any rotting wood. Limited to in-store colors only, so that way we're not getting into specialty type paints or color matching. And then the city performs an onsite inspection prior to, to make certain everything's complete. Again, it is an unbudgeted request. Looking at that, we do not know what the demand would be on this, and so originally we threw in a recommended amount of ten thousand dollars to start off. As council knows, the, the home buyers program, the new home buyers program, that's already been in place for several years, and it continues ongoing. As far as the exterior grant program, we originally set out twenty thousand dollars, and then we did another twenty thousand dollars, and we've gone through that. So that program, both, both programs are very successful. We, we hope this one is, is successful as well, so.
I know this was something that the council felt like we kind of had a deficiency in with the exterior grant program. I know George was a big proponent of making sure that we have something like this, Tom as well, and I think John brought this up too. Tom?
I have a question. The other program, all you gotta do is bring in an application and fill it out and stuff, and on this, there's, it's very strict, and I'm wondering why.
What do you mean strict?
Well, I mean, it asks for nationality, you got income, everything else, and on the other program, there's nothing.
And we can go ahead and modify that. The, the form was used based off the program that we were modeling it after. Kind of figured if we need to go ahead and modify the form, we could easily modify it.
Well, the ones we're spending the money on, there's no criteria like this, and that's why I, I, we ought to be consistent. Either do both of them or not.
Yes, sir, we can modify it and remove that.
I just have a question. Would, I'm just, you're gonna see a lot of people like cringing on the race and stuff like that, in the different demographics. What, is there a reason that should be on there?
Like I said, this was strictly, when council directed and said, hey, come up with a program, we went ahead and copied this from a, a sister neighboring's community. We sit there and say, okay, this appears to be, they ranged anywhere from homeownership was required, they ranged to where you had to provide income verification, and we didn't not want to get into that, to where we're having people provide their income information. The reimbursement costs were anywhere from one hundred dollars all the way up to fifteen hundred dollars for paint supplies. So it was kind of looking at the, what we were able to find out there, come up with this one that seemed to be relatively, I think, in line with what council was directing. So we just downloaded their form, changed the name at the top, and, and went from there. Again, we're happy to, to modify it if we think that that information is not required or too intrusive.
Does anybody else have any, I mean, I'm just trying to weigh in on, on that. Does anybody else have any feelings on that?
Brandy's next.
So this is unbudgeted, and we've, we've gotten out of the exterior grant program. We've ran out of moneyed out of that twice now. So where's this money coming from?
It would have to come out of more than likely- Right now, again, we haven't looked at that. We could reduce the new home buyers incentive program to offset that, because that's the way that we did for the exterior grant program is we took money out of that.
How much do we have left in that right now?
I, I don't have that. We'd have to get that to you, ma'am.
And then, um-
It was based upon, at the time, what we had budgeted, that we averaged for the last three years approximately fifty-six thousand dollars for new home buyers incentives.
Okay. But we reduced that by another twenty when we did the second-
No, ma'am, that, that is, that is still, fifty-six thousand dollars is what we left in for the new home buyers, and we've utilized the forty thousand dollars.
And if this is successful, and we, we decide that we want to continue on, is, is just part of our exterior things, is something we need to look at it, bring it to budget when we come back to the budget meeting?
The budget for twenty twenty-one was already bumped up from ninety-five thousand to, I believe, a hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars for the increase in the two programs.
It was something we could look at in twenty twenty-one and take from there.
Yes, ma'am.
Okay.
Something we could look at for twenty twenty-one.
Okay.
Okay, Tom?
I don't know why this is a separate program. This ought to be part of the one we've already implemented, and it ought to have the same criteria. It's just that we will only pay up to so many dollars on paint. I don't know why we're making a third program out of this, so.
Because under the second program, it is a twenty-five percent cost share. They have to provide receipts.
But you could add a criteria on there for paint only or something. And, and you're only buying paint here if, if there's no labor or anything else involved. You say-
Paint and supplies. So that's why we went up to two hundred fifty dollars. If masking tape, tarps, whatever, brushes, rollers, paint and supplies.
I don't know why that wouldn't be part of what we've already implemented if we're gonna do that.
That was what we talked about as a council last time, where people were excluded from that because of those reasons, and that's why-
Right, but there is a minimum on that of twenty-five hundred dollars. If you could say, leave it alone, what you've got, but add another paragraph said, paint, up to two hundred fifty bucks. No labor, not, just, we're making this difficult. We're gonna have three different programs here, and, I think the intent of that second program was to do this, and it ended up being something else. And, uh, there's no limits on it, but yet we're restricting a guy that wants five gallons of paint. It alls to be on one thing.
That's what this does.
I don't know how to fix it yet. I've, I've said and read through this, so.
Okay. All right, Ben?
On the home improvement, the exterior grant program, there is a limit as to how much Max will pay.
Yes, sir, it's twenty, if they have more than twelve thousand five hundred dollars worth of qualified expenditures, it's a, again, twenty-five percent match, so it goes, it maxes out at twenty-five hundred bucks.
But both of these have here in this, obviously, I mean, you're gonna have to have a pretty big house to run twenty-five, to get up to where you're gonna get that amount of, of a reimbursement on, on the exterior grant programs. So this is definitely a good solution to try to help those that, again, I mean, I looked, I looked at painting my house this year and everything, and just trying to see what cost would be. And for mine, six hundred dollars, seven hundred dollars, me doing the work myself, obviously not. Hiring it out, so five, six hundred dollars, there's no way I'm gonna ever be able to hit the exterior grant program threshold. So this is great, because it's providing a good solution, up to two hundred fifty dollars. I love, I love what you guys have done in implementing, because I know we talked about this during the budget meeting, there. If we're looking, and I think the mayor mentioned possibly the idea of MTBE money to fund this grant for this year, if we're quickly approaching that fifty-six thousand that's left in the home, new home buyer program already, then it probably wouldn't be wise to take that ten from there. So, in making a recommendation or a motion on this, I'm gonna pull back over there, I apologize there. I make a motion to approve the exterior grant program in the amount of ten thousand dollars to be funded out of MTBE.
Would you be willing to add to that, that the information for collected reflects how we're doing the exterior grant program?
Yes, striking the, the, the race ethnic questions, and then also the, the monetarius.
Okay. Would there be a second? George?
I'll second.
Okay. Any further discussion? Tom?
So we're voting on something based on what we were provided tonight, assuming that it's gonna look different, without knowing what it's gonna look like?
Looks like that, minus the information that's being requested on the nationality.
Okay. Well, the last time I voted for something like this, it didn't have, no requirements in it, and then that showed up after we voted on it. Because when it was presented to council the first time, it didn't have any requirements.
Yes, sir, it did.
Yes, it did.
As far as homeownership?
It was absolutely in the packet.
As far as the homeownership and which kind of properties qualified for?
But there wasn't any- But there wasn't any, I'd have to go back and look. There, there was something added in it that was not in the original presentation that we ended up voting on. And I didn't catch it when we voted on it. I gotta go back and identify it, but anyway. I've been caught before voting on stuff and then it ended up being what I thought it was gonna be, so. I understand what you're saying, we're gonna leap the meat out of the mill that says ethnic and how many kids you got and all that stuff, so, okay.
Okay, got a motion and a second. Is there any further discussion? Not seeing any, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? And that motion passes six zero. Next item on the agenda is this governing body reports, and we'll start with Jen.
I don't have anything to report tonight.
Brandy?
I don't have anything tonight.
Tom?
The, the, I just recalled what I was, got added is the no income restriction is what was added to that after it was presented to us. It wasn't in the first presentation, so.
Okay, Ben?
No, I don't have anything tonight.
George?
Yeah, I think, again, with the COVID nineteen, that everybody just be positive. Keep checking on your neighbors, keep checking on your loved ones, encourage them that we're gonna get through this and just trust in the Lord. Thank you.
John?
I don't have anything. I'm, I was, I missed the, I was out of town last week before the CNT meeting, so Tom sat in for me, but so. You may have forgot, but I think you were there, weren't you, Tom?
Tom?
The CNT meeting last week, you sat in for me on the CNT meeting?
Yes.
And that's due to what I was gonna report, just how it went. But the main thing that was on that was about the baseball, the fifty thousand dollars to our ball field. Yes, they passed that. I would make a motion.
Ben? Got a motion and a second. Not seeing any further discussion. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? And that passes six zero.